Good evening. I'd like to call the work session on Wednesday, September sixth, two thousand twenty-three to order at six P M, six oh one P M. Agenda item number two is possible adjournment to close session to consult with council to obtain legal advice. The authority for this closed session is contained in the general provisions, article subsection three dash three zero five, section B seven. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
President, make a motion to adjourn to a closed session.
All right, is there a second?
Section three zero five, B seven.
Mister President, I'll second the motion.
Uh, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Sednor?
Yes.
Councilman Cole?
Yes.
Councilman DeWatt?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell? President Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'll now read the following statement into the record. The reason for adjournment to a closed session is to consult with the council to obtain legal advice. The authority for this closed session is contained in the general provisions, article subsection three dash three zero five, section B seven. Now, all of those who received the team's meeting invitation can leave the meeting and go into the team's meeting for a closed session. We will resume the Zoom regular meeting session as soon as a closed meeting is adjourned. See you all there. All right, I will start. Agenda item number three is a bid recommendation for Stephen P. Turney Recreation Complex Lighting. Department of Parks and Recs, Director Bailey, you're on the floor.
Uh, thank you, Mister President, Mayor Mo and council members. Uh, the Department of Parks Recreation is requesting approval to replace all existing lights with new L E D fixtures at the Stephen P. Turney Recreational Complex. Uh, the Stevens Turney Recreation Complex opened in nineteen ninety-four. Since it's opening, various improvements have occurred such as safety netting, shade structures for spectators, and resurfaced parking lot. The proposal will allow for new L E D lights throughout the complex. The new ball field fixtures will increase lighting levels to meet current athletic lighting standards, allowing for better vision and improving player safety. The softball lights will have state-of-the-art networking control system that will allow for scheduling, instant on and off, and dimming capabilities from a smart device or computer. The conversion is estimated to have a sixty-five percent reduction in energy usage and an estimated twenty percent reduction in utility costs. All Meltech products carry an above industry standard ten-year warranty. The Department of Parks Recreation solicited bids through the e- Maryland marketplace and the city of Laurel website, and we received four bids, and they were as follows. Apartment Electric, four hundred ninety-eight thousand one hundred. Lighting Maintenance Incorporated out of Patagonia, Maryland, for three hundred and seventy-five thousand. Zero Draft Mar- Maryland out of Lutherville, Maryland, for two hundred ninety-nine thousand nine hundred twenty-six and thirty-two cents. And R L Thompson out of Laurel for two hundred fifty-six thousand three hundred and forty-three. Funding for this expenditure is provided for in the adopted F Y twenty-three C I P Park Improvement Project, as well as funding from the state of Maryland. It is recommended that the Marion City Council award the purchase and installation of new L E D lighting for Stephen P. Turney Recreational Complex to R L Thompson of Laurel for the cost of two hundred and fifty-six thousand three hundred and forty-three dollars, and provided for a contingency of ten percent for an additional twenty-five thousand six hundred and thirty-four dollars and thirty cents for an overall total proposal of two hundred eighty-one thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars and thirty cents. Mister President, I'm available for questions.
All right. Are there any questions or comments from the council? All right, then this item will be on the agenda.
Comment, Council President, just a quick comment.
Sure.
Um, I think it's great, Bill, that you, uh, uh, that we got R L Thompson in that because, uh, not only are they, uh, they've been, uh, city, city and, uh, city business, but they're, uh, uh, it's great, it's a family business, and, uh, uh, it's great to see some of these contracts going to, uh, it's staying, actually staying in the city, and that's great to hear. Thanks.
Any other comments from the council? All right, well, then this item will be on the agenda for September eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, the Mayor City Council meeting that will be held at six P M via Zoom. Next agenda item is agenda item number four is bid recommendation, purchase of battery-powered mowers. Department of Parks and Recs Recreation, Director Bailey, you have the floor again.
Thank you, Mister President. In F Y twenty twenty-three, the city budgeted money under environmental fair programs to start replacing the gas-powered equipment to meet the new regulations being proposed by the state of Maryland and to expand the city's sustainability goals. In the first year, the Department of Parks Recreation began replacing its gas-powered equipment to include new line trimmers, backpack blowers, and stands on, uh, stand-on mowers, as well as three electrified trailers to transport and charge the new equipment. The purpose of this equipment will allow the department to continue to move forward in year two with its green initiatives, including the adopted F Y twenty twenty-four C I P environmental programs, and again, meet the new regulations mandated by the state of Maryland that take effect in two thousand twenty-five. With this proposal, the department is looking to purchase three Mean Green sixty-inch rider mowers and one Mean Green thirty-six-inch stand-on battery-operated mower. The department received three bids for this, uh, proposal, and the three bids came in as follows. Kohler Equipment of Upper Marlboro, one hundred and eighteen thousand three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-six cents. Laurel, ironically, Laurel Law Mower of Blackwood, New Jersey, came in at one hundred and eighteen thousand seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seven cents. And Kreider of Rock- Rockington, Virginia, came in at one hundred and twenty thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ninety-two cents. Funding for this expenditure is provided in the adopted F Y twenty twenty-four Capital Improvement Plan Environmental Programs. I am recommending that the city award the purchase of the new battery-powered riders and stand-on mower from Kohler Equipment of Rock- of not Rock, but of, um, Upper Marlboro in the amount of one hundred and eighteen thousand three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-six cents. And again, Mister President, I'm available for questions.
All right, are there any questions and comments from the council? All right, well, this item will be on the agenda for the September eleventh Mayor City Council meeting that will be held at six P M. Agenda item number five is a bid recommendation, Van Dusen Road Improvement Concept Design. Department of Public Works, Director Lee, you're on the floor.
Thank you, Council President Smith, Mayor Mo, and council members. Van Dusen Road is one of the city's major thoroughfares running north and south from Contare Drive to Old Sandy Spring Road and serves the West Side Community, the University of Maryland Medical Center, and several other residential and commercial communities along its route. It is currently scheduled for resurfacing, stormwater drainage assessments, and pedestrian facility upgrades to meet the latest A D A standards. This project is to prepare the conceptual level design for safety and roadway improvements on Van Dusen Road from Old Sandy Spring Road to Conti Road, which is approximately one point six miles in length. The proposed work will include field investigation, utility impact evaluation, right-of-way impact evaluation, environmental impact, pedestrian facilities assessments, drainage and stormwater management evaluation, roadway geometry and traffic evaluation, concept report and cost estimates. When completed, the concept report will have established the parameters of the scope of work for the actual construction phase of the project. The scope of services proposal was submitted by Century Engineering, which is one of the city's contractor architectural and engineering firms for a total fee of one hundred ninety thousand six hundred and fifty-three dollars and fifty cents. Funding for this project is provided through the F Y twenty twenty-four adopted C I P Van Dusen Road project. It is recommended that the proposal be approved as submitted by Century Engineering in the amount of one hundred ninety thousand six hundred and fifty-three dollars fifty cents for the conceptual design, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Any questions or comments from the council?
Yeah, I got a question. I'm probably gonna look it up too. Any other, what's the next big project coming up that he says this, this project was scheduled to be done? Any other big projects coming up, uh, something like this?
We have, uh, other road projects, I'm not ready to present them at the moment, but we will have a few more, uh, before the, the year runs out. We're trying to get in some, of course, before the winter weather. I don't have them with me today.
I got you. So it's like, like, like every ten years, thirty-five years, does it depend on the way of the road, like, pretty much?
We actually, our studies are actually every three, and then we do, as you all know, uh, the, uh, road surface uh, studies to make sure that we're able to, uh, carry the weight and traffic on the roads, and we also do that. So with those, we've, we've outlined in the C I P several streets that have met their time to be resurfaced and repaved. Uh, the, the next largest one, uh, I believe, uh, it, part of Old Sandy Spring, but I'm not sure, so I really want to give you the information when I'm checking.
I just was, you know, just curious enough.
I, I will, I can definitely have the, the list, uh, reset up of what we have, and the next ones that we feel, uh, might be coming up. There is one emergency street we're doing right now, as you're aware, when I met you over there, and that's Oxford Drive, so we already started. That, that will end up, uh, being one of the streets where, uh, we anticipate, the cost may get above thirty-five thousand, we're not sure yet. Uh, but we'll see what we find.
That's why I posed a question. Okay, uh, you can definitely help, I mean, I know we probably can look it up too on C I P, but it'd be helpful to have, have it handy in case we have questions in the community. Thank you.
Uh, thank you.
All right, are there any other questions or comments from the council? All right, well, this item will be on the agenda for the September eleventh Mayor City Council meeting at six P M. Next agenda item is agenda item number six, equipment acquisition, Spartan Leaf Pro, Department of Public Works. Director Lee, you're on the floor again.
Uh, thank you again, Council President, Mayor Mo, and council members. The Department of Public Works is requesting approval for the purchase of a Spartan Leaf Pro, which is an industrial-level leaf loader slash vacuum unit designed for streets and major roadway leaf collections. This acquisition will be used to replace equipment that has exceeded its lifespan. The department solicited several quotes from vendors on both state and county contracts through Sourcewell. The submitted quote is from Atlantic Machinery, Inc. of Silver Spring, Maryland, in the amount of one hundred and thirty-four thousand one hundred and ninety-two dollars as provided through the Virginia Sheriff's Bid Contract Number twenty-three dash zero four dash zero seven one three. Based on the fleet schedule, the proposed equipment acquisition will be used to replace heavy equipment number eighty-seven, which is a two thousand and four heavy-duty leaf vac blower. Funding is available through the adopted F Y twenty twenty-four C I P Fleet Replacement Project. It is recommended that the purchase of the leaf vacuum leaf loader be approved in the amount of one hundred thirty-four thousand one hundred and ninety-two dollars from Atlantic Machinery of Silver Spring, Maryland, and I'm available if you need any more information or questions.
I have a question. What's, do you check with any other vendors? They just picked this particular one?
Uh, we've checked with multiple, so this is off of Sourcewell, and they check with several hundred vendors, give us availability and lowest price. So the Sourcewell is the big government contract that a lot of the jurisdictions use, and that's why we're able to ride the Virginia Sheriff's contract, because that was the lowest bid price.
All right, thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Are there any other questions or comments from the council?
Mister President, I have a question.
Sure.
Director Lee, we're coming up on fall season, is this available before the major leaf drop happens?
Hopefully, but we, this is one of three, so we will have two in working order for it to start the fall season.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions or comments from the council? All right, well, this item will be on the agenda for September eleventh at the Mayor City Council meeting, the other six P M. All right, and, uh, agenda item number seven is ordinance number twenty sixteen, text amendment number two six four, an ordinance of the Mayor City Council of Lower Maryland to amend the Unified Land Development Code, Chapter twenty, Land Development and Subdivision Regulations, to update the use tables in residential, commercial, and industrial zones, to update the schedule of parking requirements, to update the special exception section, to update the exceptions and supplements to zone regulations, and to update the definitions therein and providing an effective date. Director Love, you have the floor.
Thank you, and, uh, good evening, Mister President, Mayor, and council members. Four years ordinance two thousand sixteen, as required by the State Laurel Code, providing legislation uh, to amend the Laurel City Code, Chapter twenty, Land Development and Subdivision Regulations, Article One, Zoning. And, uh, as mentioned, is to update the use table in the residential and commercial zones, to update the schedule of parking requirements, to update the special exception section, to update the exceptions and supplements to the zone regulations, and to update the definitions. Uh, this is the seventh phase of the Unified Land Development Code update. Uh, the postchanges would add several definitions, update the residential use table for respite care facilities. It would update the commercial use tables to allow for tattoo parlors and body piercing studios in various commercial areas throughout the city. Update the parking requirement section would create an electric vehicle charging station requirement. It would update the solar energy collection panel section, and it would update the special exception section for respite care. Overall, uh, there were seven sections that we actually amended in this update. Uh, thank you, and I'm available for any questions.
Now, are there any major, um, changes to this that stand out to you that you think the community should be aware about?
Uh, the one, uh, some of the ones I really, uh, think is probably a big one is probably the, uh, the electric vehicle charging. Um, with that, uh, what we're doing is, um, for anything new coming in, uh, say, a bigger bigger development or whatnot, every twenty-five dwelling units are gonna have to, they're gonna need electric charging station at the, within their parking lot. If it's a non-residential building, it has to be ten percent of the parking would, would, uh, would need to have, um, you know, would account for electric vehicles in that case, and actually, we also open it up for existing buildings. Uh, if they wish to get electric vehicles, uh, we're looking at a seventy-five percent, uh, uh, permit fee waiving of, uh, that if they, uh, wish to, uh, put in these, uh, electric vehicle charging stations.
Any other comments or questions from the council?
Director Love?
Yes.
On that fee waiver, that would apply to any existing building or residence? So it doesn't have to be every twenty-five units, it would be Joe Smith wants to put in an electric charging, we could waive seventy-five percent of that permit fee?
Uh, that's initially what we're, yeah, that's what we're looking at, and if someone's to come into it with that, we're not necessarily saying that they have to have every twenty-five units or whatnot, but, um, I would think that if one's putting in, they're probably gonna put in a couple in, but it's just kind of to encourage those existing buildings to, uh, go ahead and put in some, uh, infrastructure for electric vehicles.
So this is for larger buildings, not for individual homeowners?
Uh, homeowner, homeowners could, we could, we, we could take a look, because we do have a section that talks about having the ability to do a level two, which essentially is just kind of a plug in your, in your garage to be able to do that. Um, yeah, I mean, it's pretty much open to anybody right now. If, if an individual homeowner wanted to do it, we could also look at that, most definitely.
Okay, I just want to make sure that was included. I know there are some that I've seen that have put in the level two charging stations, and it'd be nice to offer that waiver to them as well.
Mm-hmm, yeah, most definitely.
Well, any more comments or questions from the council before we move forward? Okay, well, this item will be on the agenda for September eleventh at the Mayor City Council meeting for six P M. Thank you, Director Love. And, uh, agenda number eight is ordinance number twenty seventeen, an ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of Lower Maryland to amend the Laurel City Code to remove Article Four Labor Code from Chapter twelve, Police Department, and create a new Labor Code, Chapter thirteen, and provide for an effective date. Mayor Mo, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Mister President, before you, it's, uh, twenty seventeen, which, um, as you've heard, amends the code uh, by removing our current labor code and combines the police labor code, um, and a new chapter uh, within our city code for late, the labor code. Uh, I want to thank our city administrator, Deputy C A, Assistant to the Mayor, along with our, excuse me, attorney, our labor attorney, as well as, um, our city solicitor. The new rewrite is, uh, what most were talking about, and that was just take what we gave to the police department and make it fit for uh, everybody else, uh, under the new code, and that's what we did, uh, with some, uh, other changes as needed. Uh, we believe this is a, uh, very good document, uh, without causing any issues within the police department's contract. Uh, we have had the, uh, F O P contract, um, we've been through four different, um, contracts with them, and our current contract started this year, uh, and we do have measures that take care of any issues that should arise. I want to thank, uh, Len again, Len Lucci, and, uh, ask him if he will provide the overview for the council. Thank you, Mister President.
Len? You're on mute.
Uh, thank you, Mister President. Um, this, uh, labor code, uh, was drafted to include the Department of Public Works employees that names which categories would be in the bargaining unit, and it names which categories would be considered, uh, managerial and not in the bargain unit. Um, we did some updating and stylistic changes, but no substantive changes, so that it really is the same labor code as the, uh, police, uh, has, uh, used for the past eleven years. And, um, I believe that once it's approved finally by the council, we'll be able to get started and, and, um, uh, work on developing the new bargaining unit in Department of Public Works.
All right, are there any questions or comments on this, of course? It is a large document, so I'm sure there's several comments, but I will go down the line. I mean, if you don't have your comments yet, because you're still reviewing it, of course, if we have them, we will have them for the next meeting, we can have the answers for the next meeting, but I don't want to force you to have a question that is not on your mind at the moment. But, uh, any questions from the council?
Yes, I had a couple.
Councilman Mitchell?
Um, I'll just state, I'll state the questions and then we'll come back. So the, the first one, um, was trying to get an understanding of what a non-confidential, um, employees, like, like, I guess, who exactly would be covered, or who exactly would be considered non-confidential, um, in reference to public works? Um, let me see. Uh, I think it's thirteen, uh, thirteen dash two, um, section J. Um, my question there is, can street and refuse supervisors, uh, join, uh, the union? They, um, from my understanding, they can, they, they cannot hire or fire anybody, but they can initiate, uh, disciplinary actions? Um, in reference to who can join, um, in the code, can we clearly, uh, spell out, like, who's included, who's excluded? Um, example being like, all D P W, uh, employees are eligible to join the union, including administrative staff, shop staff, laborers, crew leaders, C D L drivers, project inspectors, uh, street supervisors, uh, refuse supervisors, uh, similar, and similar positions, and excluded from the union are men's managerial positions, such as director, assistant director, deputy director, chief supervisor, um, and position of similar, uh, rank. Um, moving to, uh, thirteen, one, um, section four, I had an issue with, uh, I understand we're trying to do things exactly like the, um, the F O P, I had issue with the term meet and confer, because, um, it says meet and confer and negotiate. Uh, my question would be, shouldn't it just say negotiate? Um, as opposed to meet and confer, I think that that's probably draconian language that should be, um, should be changed. And then, when we're talking about, um, certain matters, um, in that same section, my question would be, what are certain matters? Um, who makes the determination for these certain matters? I just, um, I see if there was a legal dispute arising, I could see that being a mess, because it's not clearly, um, clearly written out. Um, let me see the next one. Um, in reference to the, the labor board and I guess my, my initial, my initial question would be that the labor board is typically, um, typically an informal hearing, um, that usually handles unfair labor practices, um, not grievances, but then I'm also trying to, um, figure out the due process in reference to the labor board, because it seems somewhat backwards, um, with the labor board and commission, because the labor, the labor commission um, is kind of the last recourse before, um, appealing to, appealing the decision to, um, to the circuit court, and I would think that the labor board would probably be more impartial, but there's still, I still have questions of their impartiality, um, the, the, those members. Um, and then my last thing was, my last thing was in reference to my notes, we were, we were asked comments when the labor code was being drafted about, um, you know, what we wanted to see in the code, and my, my really biggest sticking point was binding arbitration. And, you know, that wasn't something that I saw. Um, I do believe that it saves everyone a lot of time, and the way that I look at, of course, this labor code, I see, I see us ending up in court more often than not. Um, because I don't, I don't really see a true grievance process, I see the deck stacked against the workers, um, you know, and it seems like more of an advisory group than anything.
Do you want to speak to that, Len, or, or is the administration just gonna take these questions and have an answer for us by our next, um, council meeting?
Sure, I was trying to keep notes and get all the questions.
Sorry.
That's right. With regard to the first question on who is a non-confidential employee, um, it'd be easier to start out by who is a confidential employee, and that is anybody who works for the department director who comes into contact as part of their occupation and job responsibilities of confidential material that the director comes into contact with. Usually, it's just the executive assistant to the, um, director or the department head, um, but it, it's done by case by case. Um, the delineation between job classifications that are managerial and job classifications that were um, within the bargaining unit, um, was made after conferring with the, uh, department director and the city administrator to try and compare their responsibilities to, I mean, generally, not specifically, uh, to police responsibilities where sergeant and below are in the bargaining unit, and lieutenant and above are not in the bargaining unit. Sergeant has some managerial responsibilities, but not to the extent of the lieutenant, and we're trying to be as analogous, um, as possible on that. Uh, with regard to the grievance procedure, all it says is that's something that's gonna be a topic of negotiations, and so the two parties can agree to pretty much, you know, whatever grievance procedure they, they see fit. Um, with regard to binding arbitration, um, it was our opinion that that is not currently authorized by the city charter, which talks about collective bargaining. Um, but binding arbitration is a step beyond that, that the code, labor code can only, uh, refer to areas that are specifically authorized by the, uh, city charter, and we believe that the city charter does not currently authorize binding arbitration. Um, and then finally, with regard to the term meet and confer, um, that's a term that has been in labor law for decades, but I don't, I mean, it could come out as well, it doesn't really add or detract, it's just the term that's been used to delineate a, a type of collective bargaining. Um, I think that answers all your questions. Um I think that answers all your questions. Um I tried to.
Who's a certain matters?
Like, yeah, that's right, counsel. Would you direct me specifically to where you see that? I was trying to keep up and.
It's in the same paragraph with uh meet and confer.
What, what page?
Um thirteen uh uh page two, uh thirteen one, uh section four. So probably like uh one sentence down from where meet and confer is.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the word, what the word certain adds to it, but it was just been in there for twelve years, but um. I think that means that the two, two parties decide on on the range of of um. The discussions in regard to wages, hours and other terms, the conditions of employment. I don't know that the word certain really adds or detracts from that.
Okay.
It's just been there.
Appreciate it.
Sure.
Are there any other comments from the council? Again, if you have more that come later, we can, you're always going to answer. We're going to go over this until we're satisfied, so. Councilman Mitchell?
Just one question for Len. Um the uh, is this, is this a true statement under thirteen sixty-two? Um the grievance procedure in thirteen sixty-two and impasse leave all binding decisions up to the mayor and city council? Is that how it reads? To require the mayor and city council has that need to meet and confer. It's that same thing with that number four to meet and confer. So is the mayor and city council going to handle uh grievance procedures and uh impasse cases?
Um well, the two different things. Um my re- my reading of this is that the labor board. Is the final decision maker on grievances. Now, impasses and collective bargaining, yes, that would could ultimately go to the city council. It never has, but it could, and the city council. Has the authority to refer it out for mediation.
Mr. President, I have a a question on that one, just on the impasse part. Um the impasse, that's more towards the agreement side of things. That's nothing to do with grievances. That's just every three years. That's the impasse. So if if after a certain timeframe, we can't come to an agreement, um it would then follow these procedures?
That, that's correct.
Len, why don't, why don't we just i- instead of? I mean, I don't like to, I don't like to make any of this political as far as the mayor and city council. Uh determining any sort of grievance or impasse or anything like that. Um just from, just from the uh rent stabilization and trying to get sitting down with landlords and people and stuff like that. Um why don't we just, why don't we just automatically get a uh, an arbitrator in there that's a third party that handles, handles these labor disputes? And is is independent of everybody, then nobody, nobody can complain, nobody could be. Uh complain that it's coming from the mayor and city council or anything like that. When you have an arbitrator that's trained in this field. Why, why don't we make it uh mandatory that it goes to an arbitrator to decide on this instead of the mayor and city council?
Well, the, I mean, the mayor and city council does have the discretion to refer to a mediator. And the difference between a mediator and an arbitrator is that a mediator's decision is not binding and an arbitrator's decision. Is binding. Um the policy question in referring it to a third party arbitrator. Is that that binding decision uh would have major effects on the city's budget. Uh either requiring a tax increase or uh uh budget decrease to to pay for it. So would it affect to have the mayor and city council right now are the final decision makers on the city budget? Um outsource that decision making to a a third party arbitrator.
Well, wouldn't it be, okay, if they, if if, if say the uh representative for parks or uh. Department of Public Works and the com- the union that represents them or anything. Uh after the mayor and city council roll on something, is the next step to go to circuit court? Now you're talking about triple the time of money, triple the amount of money that you're going to spend on an arbitrator just to hear the case.
I mean, I, someone could always ask for a writ of mandamus to ask the city to do what they think it should do. Um I have not heard of that happening with municipal labor relations in the state of Maryland. Probably forever. Um but um but potentially anything could happen if someone wanted to to drag it out.
That's the only thing I'm thinking about as far as you talk about it. You know, you talk about an impasse or anything, anything like that. Um uh I would just like to see what if, if, you know, what, what if that situation comes up? And there's an impasse or, you know, there's an agreement, but I don't, I don't, as a council member, I don't think I'm trained. To determine any sort of uh arbitration or anything like that where if you get somebody in there. That's trained in that and has, has knowledge of it, I think it's going to get you better results. And I think the parties will be uh clear about that, but I would just like, you say it's going to cost the taxpayer more. I think it's going to cost. Taxpayer more if you take it to circuit court and uh you go before a circuit court judge.
I mean, I was not, I'm sorry, I was not referring to the cost of the arbitration. I was referring to the. Cost of his decision uh because most of the city budget expenditures have to do with personnel. And the arbitrator would be an unelected person who would make those budget decisions, which could have big implications on a. Budget for the size of the city of Laurel. Um I wasn't specifically talking about the cost of arbitration. There's that as well. But like I was saying before, the this, the city council can refer it out to a, a trained and certified mediator who can make. His or her recommendations to the city council and the city council could accept. Or not accept those recommendations and that, but make the mediator would bring the parties together and. Try and come up with a solution. So it's very similar to arbitration, except that mediator's decision is not final. The council's decision would be final.
Councilman Mitchell? Thank you, Larry. I mean, uh Len, Councilman Mitchell?
I appreciate, I appreciate uh uh President Smith. Um in reference to, I guess we're talking about arbitration and mediation. Um having binding arbitration doesn't um negate the possibility or. The, the step of of mediation, is that correct?
I mean, there are two different remedies and and they're not, I guess they're not mutually exclusive.
Sure. Yes, and and so um I, I guess my, my understanding through our conversations, because of course we had conversations about this. You know, if you have binding arbitration, um it, 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 it can and will be used if. You guys can't mediate the situation, but you know, it seems as if the narrative is, is if we have binding arbitration. You know, the city's always going to get the short end of the stick. Um my understanding of binding arbitration is, you know, both parties agree on the arbitrator. And you know, both parties don't get exactly what they want, you know, so it's a compromise. Um and I guess my, my, my bigger problem with the labor board is looking at its impartiality. You know, on the labor board, it consists of the city administrator, the deputy city administrator, the human resource officer. Um a representative of the collective bargaining unit who is not part of the collective bargaining process. That, that, that sentence right there is confusing in the first place, but with, without, without a doubt, those are three people from city government. Nobody um essentially from the collective bargaining unit. Um and so that, that board just seems like, you know, another appeal process. Really, but you're still appealing to the city, whereas uh you know, the grievance process, I believe. Uh the way it is now, you, you go to the city manager and that's one of the the escalation. Um so. I, I, I guess that was my statement, but yeah, I guess you already answered my question. You can still have binding arbitration. And you know, still have the availability of mediation um prior to taking the step of going to binding arbitration.
Right, but it's, it's my legal opinion that the uh. Labor code cannot include binding arbitration unless the charter specifically, specifically authorizes it.
So, so you're, you're saying that we would need to uh amend the charter to allow for um, for the code to be updated? To allow um binding arbitration?
Uh yes, sir.
Okay, so, so essentially it's another legislative step is what you're, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay. Understood. And then my, I guess my last question was. In, 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 in our conversations, we talked about binding arbitration or the ability to strike. You know, nobody wants um public workers, nobody wants the public sector to strike. But if they, if they don't have binding arbitration, you know, as I stated, it's really more of an advisory group. So what's? What's the point of joining a union that really has no power to negotiate outside of just taking us to court?
Well, um I'm not aware of a single municipality in the state of Maryland. Uh that's has binding arbitration, yet I'm aware of many municipalities that have very good. Labor management relations and and very productive collective bargaining agreements, so I.
Well, from my understanding Tacoma Park and Mount Rainier have binding arbitration. Um written in into their code, I mean, included in their code. I know I talked to former council member and and delegate Jimmy Tarlo. Um so I, I, I guess I'm confused about that one.
For, for public safety or for everybody?
Um I, I believe it was open to everybody, but the only bar, the only organized unit is public safety.
Right. Um one other thing I want to there respond to something you said before, which was a binding arbitration. You can still reach a compromise if an arbitrator gets uh. A collective bargaining agreement comes before an arbitrator. It's, it's a matter of last best offer where each side gives their last best offer from the collective bargaining group uh negotiations. And the arbitrator can decide between one or the other, but does not get the chance to like pick and choose between the two la- last best offers. So it's, he either accepts the last best offer of the employer or the last best offer of the employee organization.
Let me see.
I appreciate. Sorry, Councilman Mitchell. Councilman Zinder, you have a question or comment?
Yes, uh I got a couple of questions and a couple of statements and just something for my application as well. I want to go back to uh page three and um H. Labor Board. Um I, I see that uh what Councilman Mitchell said that bargain members, I, I recommend in my language I wrote, I was, I haven't sent it to anyone yet. I recommend that I have an issue with the city administrator being there. I have an issue with the deputy administrator and resource officer, but. I do believe that a bargain member should be on a label board, you know? Because that the bargain member is exclusive representative of the employee, so. And what is the real purpose of the label board? Like, you know, like I say, I got an idea, but I want to hear it from the attorney, the labor attorney to break that process down.
I mean, the main purpose is to hear grievances from employees.
Okay, alright. So uh just stay with me for a second. I just want to make sure that we understand. So the grievance, right? So the grievance will be negotiated in the contract in the C B A or that's something that will be spelled out prior? I know we have a grievance procedure now in place already, but.
The contract can, can lay out as a grievance procedure just for the members of that bargaining unit if they, if the two parties choose to do that.
Right. Okay, well, I like to recommend on my, my language that uh the labor board should consist of, like I said, a following people and a bargain member on the board. That's what I recommend for that page. Yeah, like I say, a lot of these questions, some of my application as well, just to get some more understanding. Um when you said the labor commissioner and the labor commissioner be someone that pointed by the mayor, confirmed by the city council. And it read down here. When it goes back to representation of unfair labor practice, right? So usually from my, you know, your experience, if uh you have unfair labor practice, right? They usually go to another, like you said, um another board. So you saying this, what I'm reading, help me out, my mind is on turf. The labor commissioner would determine unfair practice?
Uh yes, sir.
And then if they want to appeal that process, they go to the circuit court, Prince George County?
Correct.
Okay.
And let me ask a question. Um. Uh when we're talking about binding arbitration, uh until an arbitrator issues a decision. Uh the parties can always uh reach an agreement or compromise. I, I think that that was also something I would wanted to highlight in that, and not, and not say it in that, in that, in that right, but. Also, the parties are not truly getting what they want. So that, that's more so what I was saying.
Parties could right, reach an agreement at, at any time in the process.
Okay, okay. So it, it, it doesn't seem like a terrible thing. At least, at least I'll say that on record. Doesn't seem like a terrible thing.
Yes, I was, I was just hypothetical. Like, I know we had the grievance procedure steps passed away. This is what I used to the grievance season when I was a federal employee. We have our step one, our step one grievance sees with our front line and flow supervisor. Then the step two will go to that department head. Then that step three will go to uh, you know, the, the deputy director, director designate. And then, you know, after that step, you know, you usually come to uh, if that person don't agree. Then they usually go to like a, a third party outside, but can, if it wants it goes to like they say, the, the, the mayor designate. Could it go back to the labor board? Because the labor board uh where it got the same people in there, but you have a. A member from this, repres- member from the bargain there also to, to dispute that as well. Do that decision be final or do they have to go back to the Prince George County Circuit Court? Could we write it that way or we have to leave it that way it is?
The city and the union can work out pretty much whatever agreements they want in the collective bargaining agreement.
Right, yeah. So those things you're talking about at the C B A at the table.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I recommend as well. So this code was just pretty much give us the right to, for the, for the D P W workers to start unionizing and then all the other stuff that we're discussing tonight. Could be worked out at the table.
Well, everything except for binding arbitration.
Right. You said we have to do a charter amendment for that.
Correct.
Theoretically, how long would that take?
To amend the charter?
Yes, correct.
I mean, two readings in the council and then fifty days of waiting to see if someone um takes it to referendum before it becomes final, so. You know, a couple of months.
Okay. Got you.
But back to the, the steps, step process. So if you have a union representative representing all the way through the steps, a lot of stuff could be resolved. Before you get to outside source, it most of the time.
That's how it, that's how it normally works, yes, sir.
Right, yeah, right, yeah, because we only went to a binding arbitration one time when I was in the union. And I was like, anyway, um.
When I was the uh Prince George County Labor Commissioner for four years, um. Nothing ever went beyond the grievance decision. I mean, it, it, nothing's ever, no grievance was ever appealed to, to court.
So let me ask you, so based on you being, you know, uh labor attorney for us, the labor board. What's your legal opinion, you know, having that a member of the collective bargaining being on the labor board?
I mean, that, that is quite often the, the practice um to have employee representation.
Right, but the language here is saying, you know, um saying differently.
I mean, but this is the language that's been in for eleven years, but it.
Right.
How it was implemented was just the police department because it has a member. Bargaining unit who is not part of the collective bargaining process. Um.
Yeah.
I interpret that to mean someone is not on the bargaining team, but within the bargaining unit can be on the board. But if someone had been at the table for collective bargaining, this current language would disqualify them.
That's how you interpret it, okay?
Len, do you think that's uh, that's fair that uh with this labor uh board? That there's going to be three representatives from the city and, and possibly only one representing the uh. The persons that, that is accused?
Um I, I don't know about someone being a- accused, but um. As far as the grievance. Whether it's, it's fair, I can't tell you. It's practice in many other places, but. Whether it's it's fair, I can't tell you it's practice in many other places, but. I mean, I'm not, it's not for me to to say whether it's fair or not, that that's that's for you all to decide.
But to that question, though, um I mean, to catch up, councilman DeWalt, to that question, that a human resource officer, that representative is is neutral. That person is doesn't take, I mean, they got, but they not, they had to making sure that everything is going, everything is going by the book pretty much that. They just taking the rules of what management has really much, is that fair to say?
Uh yes, sir.
So only person be there would be a representative from the union and. The city administrator, whoever that person is, and they'll be negotiating, talking about the grievances, trying to come to a resolution. And. And they will have their label, the union will have their label person there, I mean, I'm quite sure, and you know, my union experience. We bought in a representative, we bought in a labor attorney with us for the union side, I'm quite sure they probably. Will do the same thing and the HR person will pretty much that making sure that things are nature show. That's how I envision it. You know, I mean, I think that's that's probably uh. I don't want to use the word fair, but I think that's supposed to most diplomatic way to uh counter that situation.
Councilman Cole, I believe you had a commenter question and and I'll let you respond, but when I just uh wanted to make sure Councilman Cole knows that's how I say it.
Yeah, no, I was just looking at that labor board as we're going over it.
Okay.
I see that. I think, are we overlooking the word that it says city administrator or the deputy? It's not both of them on the labor board, it's just one. Correct. Correct. Right. Alright, that was all.
Alright, Councilman Mitchell.
I appreciate uh uh Councilmember Sidnor's recommendation, especially with the the collective bargaining member, I think that. That definitely helps even even it up and as James um, you know, highlighted, it's. Uh city administrator or deputy senate administrator. Still, still essentially being two people, uh you know, at city hall, under the mayor appointed by the mayor. And so, you know, having that third person uh to to balance and to to advocate for the workers would would be great. As far as when we go back to the arbitrator, it's more of a comment, you know, of course, the arbitrator would make um would make a decision. And um, you know, my understanding is that the arbitrator uh would definitely give economic considerations. Um, because, you know, through through our conversation, it almost seems like um. You know, if there was binding arbitration and and we lost an arbitration, that arbitration would bankrupt the city moving forward, but. But I I don't I don't see that being the case, because of course, there's going to be economic considerations taken. My my second thing was when we talk about the labor commissioner, uh it says really in consultation. With the bargaining unit, um is is there something, uh if if we were to keep that, is there something where we could say uh in in agreement? Um, because that that seems like 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 different, like, like, hey, I spoke to them and, you know, they advised me, but we chose, we chose this. Um, so. You know, that that was just something that I was thinking about, and then the last thing was. You know, if we don't want to go back and and amend the labor code for binding arbitration. You know, the the nuclear option, of course, hopefully never used would be removing the ability to strike. And so that would be my recommendation.
Well, Wendy, want to speak to that?
I mean, I don't have any. Res- response that I yet yet it's factually correct what you said.
So. Am I hearing a recommendation to add a person from the bargaining unit to the labor board? Is that the recommendation?
Yes, that's my recommendation.
And it sounds like Councilman Mitchell is in favor of that.
So you would delete the the words who is not part of the collective bargaining process so that. It could be a representative of the bargaining unit who is a part of the collective bargaining process.
Yeah, and I was little, well, the language was like, I'm kind of long, so I basically saying that from my union experience, we always had a a bargain member at the table when they're going into agreements, you know. I was, the language kind of threw me off, so basically what I'm saying is that. A bargain member sh- should be at the table when they go into, when they want to the grievance price process. On the labor board. So I don't.
So I think deleting those words would accomplish that, the on the third line under subsection H. The words who is not part of the collective bargaining process of that was deleted, that would accomplish your aim.
Yeah, the negotiation team only come every three years anyway, so that, you know, if you're doing your regular grievance, that, you know, you don't know who you're going to put on your negotiation team, because you haven't. Got to that step yet. So I could be on the labor board in my union recommending me to go to be the negotiator on it, you know, under the members, because. I mean, that's from my experience, that's how I did, as I set up, I I set up a negotiated contracts. And I did represent people with step one, step two, I went to step three grievance as well. And that it was interchangeable, it's all depend on, you know, what the union wanted me to go with, how they wanted me to proceed, so. Doesn't make sense, what I'm saying?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Oh, Councilman DeWalt.
Len, I know you're not as familiar uh with the city as I am as far and even as far as uh. The outlay and the uh. Just like Martin said, the mayor, the mayor appoints most of these uh directors. Um, uh he. He. Decides on their bonuses, he does a lot as far as running this city, runs it basically by himself. But. I mean, we're going in, we're we're trying to, on his first. This is a very, very important legislation, and we're trying to change a little bit of the culture of our city. To where we we as a council have a lot more. Power than we've ever had and and it it's coming down to um. In November, we're going to be able to work as a five-member council, whoever's on that council. And we're going to be able to work um like a council should work. Um, I've been handcuffed basically for almost five years, and I know other council members have been handcuffed. In getting ideas and things like that accomplished through this city. And and you know, when you have a certain cul- culture that's been in an organization for a. Long, long time, that culture is very hard to even take a nick out of it. It's very, very difficult, and that's all we're trying to do here as far as. You know, you got a city administrator, you got a deputy city administrator, and you got a human resource. And they're all appointed by the mayor and they're all department heads like that. And you definitely to make it fair, equal and balanced. For those employees who have to go up from Department of Public Works and the Police Department. Who have to go up against that board, you need to make, we need to make it fair. And we make, need to make it equitable and we need to make it balanced in a chance that they could uh, they could possibly get. Disciplinary action, termination, whatever like that, and as a council member, I'm not trained in that. And I know, I don't know what the s- city administrator, their deputy city administrator. Or the human resources has has in arbitration or or uh developing anything about arbitration. But that's that's what we're trying to do, we're trying to least. Make a little bit, make it a little bit fair and make it a little bit equitable. As far as being a five-member council that actually does have some credence and does have some pull. In decision-making and making it fair and equitable for our employees, and I think I think this is our first. Uh contest for that, because we only have a little over two months to go now. And um and we need, we need to start making that culture a little bit better.
Um, I'll go to Councilman Mitchell, then Councilman Sidnor, you came after Mitchell, so. Councilman Mitchell?
Um, yeah, just to clarify the two recommendations I now broken down. Uh, the the way I see like a board being balanced would be the board be uh, the board should have a city representative. A union representative and an impartial person uh mutually uh selected uh or agreed. Or you know, or approved by the city and the union. And so that is, that is how I see a fair mutual board. Um, and then the second recommendation being if we don't want to to do the charter amendment. That we remove the the no-strike provision. So yeah, those are the two recommendations.
Oh, Councilman uh Sidnor.
Yeah, well, clarity, I'm a little confused on something, um. This is my experience, usually when you have a. Relation, labor management relationship, it's labor and management relationship, right? So your step one is always between the frontline supervisor and the employee. But that employee can have a union rep there to advocate for them. Step two process is the same process, that union representative will always be there with that employee through the whole process. You know, so I don't think we need a a outside person. Now, if we get to step three, where you want to get to when the the mayor doesn't need whoever. Then that union person can probably bring in one of their a lawyer with them, some from the union, you know, someone. To help, you know, with the case of, but I don't think we need to have a. A a another non-person, like Councilman Mitchell said, I don't think that's necessary, use that's user process. Labor management try to work at the lowest level possible to resolve any conflict. Because you, you know, your employee, your manager, you know, you might have a conflict, you try to resolve it between that frontline supervisor, that process should. But that's something that we just talk about at the table, though, you know, so I guess we should try to get the code, um. We're not, but we I with, I'm standing, are you saying that if we don't have that process, we just go straight to? Arbitration, is that I'm hearing that correctly or misunderstanding something, I just want to make sure I'm clear.
Councilman Mitchell, I did use um asking you a question.
Or Councilman DeWalt, either one, I mean, if we don't. How's how do you vision, how do you envision that if I have a the frontline supervisor shouldn't have a. Shouldn't try to resolve the issue with the employee on their lowest level first?
That, let me understand, just restate the question one time, let me just.
I'm saying, you're saying that, I'm trying to understand the process of you guys uh. Like saying it, but it goes straight to arbitrator, are you saying that the frontline supervisor shouldn't try to, shouldn't we try to resolve that conflict with that employee first?
No, no, I I don't think, I don't think either of us were advocating for it to go straight to uh in harbor in harbiter.
Alright, okay, alright, thank you, alright.
Yeah, okay, my apologies for that.
So so for clarification. Are you guys in agreement, if you guys want to add a a rep from the. From the board, from the, I mean, you want to add a rep on the board from the bargaining unit?
Yeah, well, yeah, my recommendation was a a a union rep and and the impartial person that that we agree upon as a third person.
And what and what, Councilman Sidnor was saying, you were saying there doesn't need to be a union rep. It needs to be just.
I say you need a union rep, you don't need a a impartial person, you don't need a.
Oh, okay, okay.
You know, you just that union rep, wherever they send it, a union rep, that person is the representative. Employee there and a union rep advocating for the employee. So that impartial person, Councilman Mr. Mitchell was saying, I don't think that that. We, I never seen that in my union experience, you know, so. So that, to me, we don't need that individual. Because the union representative is a representative, the representative of the of that person, so he's. That's the relationship we're talking about.
I understand, so the it's basically two recommendations on the table, one would be to add a union rep and an impartial person. And then one is to add a union rep and leave out the impartial person.
Correct.
Okay. Understood.
But that, I mean, that you're talking, Keith, you're talking only about the first stage of a a grievance. Anything can get resolved right at the first stage of it.
Now, I was talking all the way through the process, you know.
You know what I mean, you just then. Oh, if you get to the end there, then you you got to have it fair and equitable, you got to have a union rep there, and you have to have an impartial. Person that the city and the union agree to bring in there. Anybody, get somebody that they both agree on, that's gonna uh be uh fair and equitable. And gonna is going to be impartial. We don't want to do, you don't want to have two union people there or two city people there. You want to have a union representative, you want to have the city person, and you want to have a person that both parties agree to bring in there.
So I guess my question now is to when, if you're hearing these both recommendations. Which one sounds, I guess. Logical in your, I mean, anything's logical, because we are the council, I can I get that, which one sounds. Logical in your opinion and why or why not? And the other.
Yeah, I mean, it's it's early in the, that, I mean, it's it's unusual to have an independent person. Like that, uh on that step of the grievances, but. I mean, my advice would be to let, let's let the collective bargaining. Process and uh employee organization recognition process. Get started by enacting what you have here and letting it get going, and then. If there are issues and how it works out, that could always be. Addressed by the mayor and council, but, you know, we have a new. Bargaining unit and you'll have a new exclusive bargaining representative for that unit. And they'll go to the table and and uh work out a collective bargaining agreement. My advice would be, let's see how that works out, let's see what they put in the agreement that for the grievance process. And then if there's something that's deficient, the council could look at that and 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 fix it if it's needed. That would be my advice, but that's just, that's not. Legal advice, that's just. Practical labor advice.
I mean, I would, I I think there's agreements in adding a person from the bargaining unit. Um, it's and. I guess it from what I'm hearing. I would be in favor of that and then move forward and see. How, but that's, I'm one man on this council, so I would. I guess I'd like to hear from the others. I mean, I've I've heard from Councilman DeWalt, how do you, uh, how do you feel, Councilman Cole?
I agree with uh Mr. Lucci. I would like to see this agreement move forward, I did spend a lot of time comparing it to what's currently on our books. We can pass this, get it through so they can at least start to collective bargaining process, we can always go back through and amend it later. Um amendments do not take long, we just read an ordinance just before this ordinance, amending what we currently have. Um, I want to see the employees be able to move forward this as quickly as possible, and if we hold this up with a bunch of changes. It's not going to allow that for the employees.
You guys are in favor of moving it forward?
Yeah, yeah, only thing, I I like to move it forward also, but I do like the the labor board, I would like to have a union representative. From that, other than that, other stuff, we can negotiate the table, you know, but that language, I would like to see that.
That, well, I I I believe there's a grievance on that between. Four of us, it looks like so far, we, because there there was already, there's only two on the other side, but there's, it sounds like four on that, so I would. I would push for those recommend those changes in that, but I would love to. Have that added and I guess moving forward as well, so.
Hey, Bruce, just one, one comment, um, why don't we just, what? If the impasse is that board, why don't we leave the board out for now? Leave it out for now, and when we pass everything else, that like James said, we pass this thing, leave the board out of it. And then the city and the the bargaining unit get together. And they select, they select the people that are going to be on the board, how about that?
Well, I think, I think, I think y'all are saying like similar stuff, but like, like different things. Um, that that that's just my thought, because what I'm hearing is let's pass it and then correct it after the collective bargaining agreement. And so that's kind of like the the false promise of government all the time, of like, let's correct it after we pass it. You know, like, I would, I would like to get the most perfect labor code before we pass it, before they move to the collecting bargaining um process, because. At the end of the day, it's taken long enough to get here.
Well, well, I'm in favor, it will, again, there's four of us that said we'd like to add someone. To that, to that labor board, and at least we, I think at a minimum, we can do that, because we all agree on that. Is it, is if we can have that amendment in there and and then move this forward, I think we can come back later. And still discuss and and see what we want to change up about it. Is that, is that um, is that okay with the council?
Still with it.
Alright, well.
Mr. President, I have a couple of comments.
You're done.
You're welcome.
Uh, we'll, we'll take uh all the um thoughts and ideas uh under advisement. Uh, we'll talk about it internally here and we'll let the council know where we stand, uh, the um. I don't think there's issues, but the issue that I'm going to be focused on is to make sure whatever we do doesn't. Uh interfere with the current contract with our, with our FOP, uh. With our FOP, uh, so we'll we'll be be looking at that to make sure this doesn't. Um, interfere with that and, um. Like I said, we'll we'll talk about that internally. Um, I I do think, um, this has moved forward pretty quickly. I, you know. We didn't hold it for three months. We moved this forward. So let me make sure that's clear. Second thing is if you feel handcuffed, come see me tomorrow. I got a key. And, uh, we'll we'll help you along. Um, I have not heard of anybody for the past five years bring up about the, uh, public works. Uh, unionizing, in fact. Mr. DeWalt, you voted no on a budget before that gave benefits and other increases to our employees and then you were, um. You were missing in action on another budget that you didn't vote for as well. So those all things affect. Um. The employees and their benefits and salaries.
Is this going to be a time to criticize each other, Mayor? Is that what?
Absolutely, Mr. DeWalt.
Okay, go ahead.
I have. Um. So for those comments to come forward and then, uh, to to continue to. Say that employees don't have other employees. Um. You know, their benefits, their salary and want to help them, it's just not true. There are department heads that are appointed and then they're confirmed by the city council. And you see their resumes. So, uh, that's my comments and I'd be more than glad to sit down with anybody. My door is open all the time. Uh, and, uh, if you want to come talk. Come see me. Thank you, Mr. President.
Well, thank you for taking that into consideration again. As you heard, the council, we're we're looking forward to having that, uh, member added on there and we're looking forward to hearing back from you. And so I'll push this item, this item will be on the agenda for September eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. May their mayor and city council meeting for six P M. And I want to thank you guys all and thank you, Len, for working on this, um, on behalf of the city. We appreciate your hard work. We have a lot of passionate council members, so please don't take any offense to any questions we ask. It's because we're just trying to do our best to move the city forward with the time we have left before the next election coming up. And, uh, with that being said, there being no further business to come before the mayor and city council, this meeting is adjourned.